John can make it. He was on vacation. Oh, sweet. What? It's what? Oh, your dog city, okay. Important duty. Is that a big dog, old dog?
Uh, they got two, uh...
Okay, I'll probably be in order.
That's good.
For Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Uh, we have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public appearances, and this is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. And I'm guessing we don't have any of those tonight. We have a number of people here for TDS, obviously, and that's our next item. Number five is unfinished business. Discuss and consider terms and conditions relating to the hold on TDS right-of-way permit. We have Josh Worrell here. Worrell, did I pronounce that right? Sorry, Jim Worrell. If you could come up here and we'll let the folks from TDS present their solution and resolution here first, and then anybody that wants to speak can speak after that. You may have your questions answered by Mr. Worrell.
So, thank you for your time. You know, I sense it will be time, so I'll be as brief as possible and try to give you guys an overview of the situation. Um, so since we last spoke, we've had multiple meetings with your city staff to look at the village as a whole, to see what's left as far as construction goes and identify any areas that would be constructed in a similar manner as here, meaning front pedestals. And quick side note, just so if I slip, I'm gonna try to use the full term pedestals. I know last time when I was here, I said "ped" and I shortened it up sometimes, and there was a group that maybe thought I said "pet", and then offended people. I'm sorry if that came across that way. "Ped" is short for pedestal. So, just wanna get that out there. I'm gonna try to use the full term, but if I slip and say "ped", I'm saying "head", not "pet". So, we've met with the group. We've identified these areas in Cottage Grove that would be similar to here, and we have redesigned them. So, moving forward, any areas that would've had front pedestals will no longer have them. Um, they will go through a re-permit, reapproval procedure, so we won't have these problems moving forward. Um, does anybody have questions on that? You can verify that with city staff, so that will go through the permit process all over again, uh, because it has not been constructed yet. Okay. So, in the area in question, we have a map here for those, just to identify some color real quick. Yellow are the easements, meaning those are the areas that the village provides that we can build legally. Um, and then we've identified some houses in red and orange. Those are the houses that we've heard from that have come to forward the board meeting. I'm sure there are many more. I'm sure there are people here tonight that aren't here, so that's, that's not by... I'm not trying to mislead you, that these are the ones we've identified and we've heard from since the last meeting. You will see the main focus up here is on Forston and Arberry, um, and then we have some on Tyrell, Trail... Excuse me if I'm pronouncing that one. Run down here, Trillium, and then on Heather Drive. Heather Drive extends this way as well.
Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah?
I, I think if you point on, I think that'd be easiest, easiest to point on there, then it'll show up on the screen.
You guys get to see my hands. Okay. So, as you can see here, we'll start up on Forston and Arberry. This is an area in which we did not have back easements. You'll see right through here, there's one, and right through here, there's one, but for the rest of everybody here, we did not have access to get back there legally. And we would have to build past these houses in the front to get to the back, and that's inefficient because we're placing others in the front. It just all ends up being front pedestal. If you come down here on Dentaria Drive, you'll see that we also do not have back easement, so we had to build in the front. If you come over here on Heather Drive, you'll see that there, that back easement stops here, and then there's nothing here, so we can't build there, so we had to jump up and come to the front. Now, there are some areas, and this was expressed last time I was here, that have back easements that was chosen by us to use the front easement for efficiencies and economic reasons. You'll see that up here on Tyrell, and you'll see it over here on Hawthorne Court, and then also on Yarwood Hill. Yarwood Hill does have front pedestals already, um, so that technically was following the existing easements as it is today. So, um, currently, this neighborhood is built, so the facilities are there. They were permitted and approved by the village, meaning we went through a process. We submitted designs. The designs went to the Public Works folks, and they approved the designs. Uh, we are in legal easements everywhere we are. We cannot move these currently today. Okay? It would be far too expensive to move the, all the facilities to the back easements. So, what we are proposing, sorry about moving this around, um, is for those who do not want service or would not like the pedestal in the front, we will replace with the smallest possible handhole. They will not be able to get service out of these handholes, but they will not have a front pedestal in their yard. We also will go in and do massive restoration, okay? Last time this came up, we have two issues here. We have construction and restoration issues, and we have a front pedestal issue. We've massively failed on the construction and execution portion. Um, it was not up to standards. You can drive through the neighborhoods and see that. We will fix that. That was on us. That's our problem. It will be done moving forward, and as soon as we get our permits back, it will be the top priority to come in and get those neighborhoods fixed. On the location issue, those locations were permitted, so we, we are in illegal easement to be there. Um, so, we went out and we surveyed, uh, the people for contact information we have. Is this not gonna be an easy decision? Because we've heard everything from, "You've lost my business. I don't want your service. Get rid of the pedestal. Get out of my yard", to, "Well, I really wish you wouldn't have torn up my yard, but I still would like the service to everyone, everything in between", to, "Hey, you know, we'd like you to move the ped if possible. We'd still like the option of service", or, you know, "We would like you to place a flush mount." The flush mount is not an option at this point. Uh, our network services and network operations team, this has been escalated to the highest executive levels. They have decided in Wisconsin, servicing from underground or splicing and everything has to happen is not reliable service. You can't install in the winter, and they've made the decision that we cannot do it. So, we are willing to go through for anyone who wants it and pull out these pedestals. They will not be able to get service, and their neighbors will not be able to get service, depending on whose service on that ped. So, it gets very messy. We can walk through it, um, but that essentially is a very quick overview of, of what's happening here. Um, for logistics purposes, it's probably easiest for us to decide which beds are coming out and which ones aren't. Pedestal, excuse me, um, because restoration should happen at the same time. It wouldn't be good if we went in to restore and then went back in to rip out the beds and then restore again. So, it would be nice if this all kinda happened logistically at the same time, just for the efficiency of the neighborhood. Um, what questions do you have for me?
Any questions from board members?
How quickly would this transpire?
Uh, which part?
Fixing, fixing it, taking out pedestals that people don't want.
I mean, I can't speak to how quickly they'll get it done, but as soon as you give us our permits back, we're gonna have, we're gonna be on the phone to contractors and getting people in there to help fix the neighborhood. As far as switching out the pedestals, um, I mean, I assume they can do that relatively quick, but I'm guessing here, maybe a couple of weeks. I'm not sure. It just depends. Once they get started, I don't know how many crews they would put on it. I don't have a good answer for you. I'm sorry. As quickly as possible.
Any other board members?
Will you guys have oversight to what's being done? Because I know that you had your subcontractors out, but a lot of times they're not necessarily paying attention to quality. Will you have oversight from TDS, like, members on the ground from TDS making sure that, uh, everything's working forward?
As far as restoration or the construction for the rest of the village?
Restoration, construction for the rest of the Grove, the whole thing.
Um, so I can't speak for network services, but I can say that we can look into that. We do have a QC process, and, you know, JJ maybe can speak to that process a little better than I can as far as what we've done so far with restoration in the village and how that's gone. From what I understand, other than this neighborhood and maybe a few other pockets, restoration has been, with above average, be fair, JJ?
Yep.
Okay. So, it, it's, it's been good in other places. We failed here, and we know that, so we'll make it better. So, I think in general, our QC process, quality control, is, is pretty efficient, um, but we will all obviously strive to be better and get it done here.
John?
How about the notification process occurred? Is it TDS's responsibility or the village to allow the citizens in these particular subdivisions the option to know that the pedestal can be removed, however you won't get service? Is that gonna be on you or the village?
Yeah, and Julie, do you have a good answer for that?
Hi, my name is Julie Myers, uh, on our marketing team and communications team from TDS. So, yes, we, uh, we listened to your concerns from the last couple of meetings with our communications, so let me just address, uh, the communications overall, um, and that we can do better with that as well. And we've, um, taken a lot of what you've said and are working that into our, our processes, um, not only for Cottage Grove, but other, um, areas as well. So, we appreciate the feedback. Um, you know, specifically to these homes, we'll, you know, we can work with you to do what's most efficient. Um, you know, we've gotten phone numbers as best we can for those that are affected, and, and Josh and a couple of other folks have called these, these residents. So, if, um, if you think that's most efficient, we'd be happy to do that. Um, you know, if you wanna post something on your, your sites or your Facebook site, that's great, too. Um, and we can coordinate. We can, you know, we've placed ads in the newspaper. I don't know how effective that is, but we could also, um, you know, place a couple more ads in the newspaper.
So, moving forward, um, as neighborhoods would receive this kind of service, I think in the past, if these are door hangers or something, that's...
Right.
Yeah, they're looking to use direct mailers or something, so it doesn't blow away, or...
Exactly right, yeah. So, direct mail, um, you know, and the other thing that we're interested, actually, I'd like your feedback on, too, is, um, there's other, um, companies like ours who are doing some fiber builds. They do yard signs. So, you know, I need to suggest putting something else in your yard, but, um, you know, it, it's, it's like, um, an election sign, and it just notifies people. So, when you're driving down the street, you can see constructions coming or, or what the dates are and that type of thing. So, uh, but yeah, we can do, uh, for sure, we can do direct mail. Um, that's probably the, uh, most efficient and, um, like, we're guaranteed that people will look at that in their mailbox.
Is, is that an option, then, for these neighborhoods here?
Absolutely.
To notify all the residents of...
Absolutely.
...the potential options that they have?
It might be the best goal, just for this, because it's relatively small geographic area, is to give everybody a letter through the post office, so they know they got it.
Yeah. Yep.
And I think that it should be different than your advertising for their, for your business.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be customized, because...
See, TDS...
Yeah, you don't want to get lost in the...
Right. I think it's just junk mail.
Sure. The other thing we talked about, too, was actually having a meeting, um, if people wanted to come and just specifically sit down and talk with us, and, um, so that's an option as well.
That might be a good idea, something that they can sign up for not having service or having service. What do you guys do if, um, you've got, you know, two neighbors that absolutely do not want it, and the neighbor next does absolutely want it? Because I've actually had people in the neighborhood tell me, "I want TDS", so...
Yeah, we've not come across this situation before. I guess we would look to the board for some guidance. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of a, uh, there's two, two sides to the, the equation, right? Um, we, we thought we were doing the right thing and being in the easements and, and building where we were supposed to build. Um, so, on the other hand, you know, the residents who want the service would have the right to get it. But, on the other hand, we don't really, you know, we don't want to make the rest of the neighborhood unhappy. So, um, it, it's hard for us to decide that, to be honest.
Any other board members?
Well, JJ had some questions.
JJ? Yeah.
Did you want...
From your memo, I mean...
I think he was writing those for you guys, so it's just putting himself in, putting himself in a board member's shoes. What types of questions would he, would he ask?
And I thought it was very well written.
Could, I just make a suggestion, and that is, um, I think sometimes there's an assumption that everyone knows what all the terms are.
Yeah.
And so, when, you know, you say, "Well, we built within the easement", I'm not sure that everybody understood that, you know, there were easements in front, some in back, and I think that that's probably a step that has to be taken to just say, "Well, okay, when we say we're gonna install, we can't install in the back, or we, or we're gonna do it in front", and so there isn't any, uh, any question about that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, I had a question as far as how do you determine what house gets the pedestal in front of it as opposed to a different house?
Uh, from my understanding, it's really a, a design efficiency. Engineers are, are calculating, you know, the distances between the homes and the most efficient placement of that pedestal.
So, if one person doesn't want the pedestal or the service in front of their house, but the one next to them does?
Yeah. It is possible to move them. Um, you know, we would have to know exactly, you know, who wants it, who doesn't, to determine, you know, what we could move.
So, in that respect, you'd be willing to work with the neighborhood rather than it be, uh, either everybody has the service or nobody has the service in that area?
Yes, we can, we'll do the best we can do. I, I, then we can't guarantee that, you know, it, it, no, all, sorry. If there's, you know, these folks don't want it, but these do, there's, um, there's engineering that might say, "We can't do these unless we do these", so I can't, I'm not well versed enough to know exactly how that will work, but we, I think we could take a good shot at optimizing the situation, if that helps.
So, if these people here decide that they don't want service, we're gonna place the smallest possible handhole, so it has the smallest footprint, so it's not there, and that's simply because there's pipe coming down there, and we just wanna curl it up there and leave it, so it'll be the smallest possible handle we can do. But if we do that, the fiber doesn't pass through, and therefore, these people down here wouldn't be able to get the service. So, it gets really complicated really fast. It's one of those things where we've talked this to death back and forth, and it almost comes to the point where it's like, "Hey, we need to just serve everybody", or we don't, we serve nobody on that street because of the logistics of how the fiber actually has to pass through there.
So, one question, I guess, um, and I was thinking, you know, from JJ's memo, let's say that the village had said, "No front pedestals from the outset", like, when you did the permit. What would you do?
So, chances are with this area, um, if we were forced to go down the back easement here and down the back easement here, because Heather Drive comes through here, and then not go in front here, we wouldn't have been able to, first of all, serve these people here, so that would've been eliminated. But the short answer to your question is, it would create such long fiber routes that this whole area probably just would've gotten carved out of the build. And we, we do that all the time, right? When, when it comes to a certain area. Some areas are just not efficient to build when we go into cities, and those areas just don't get a DFN, or it's what we call a fiber hub. Um, if it's too expensive per household passed, it just gets carved out, and we just don't build it.
Or we go to the neighborhood, and, um, we've had instances where a neighborhood will contribute a dollar amount to get the fiber into their neighborhood, and so that happens as well. It's happened many times.
How easy is it if, um, if these homeowners decided they didn't wanna have the service, but then down the road, all of a sudden, mine changes?
Yeah, I, sorry. If they move, if someone moves, and then the next resident comes in and they want the service, um, we can't do it.
So, you either have it or you don't. Put this point out.
Well, we are placing the hand...
Yes.
Hypothetically, the fiber would be there.
Yeah, it could.
Could, a ped could be replaced, and it, it could be spliced in. So, hypothetically, twenty years from now, or thirty years from now, if, even if we didn't serve this entire neighborhood and we took out all the beds, we replaced little handholes everywhere. Hypothetically, all new homeowners, the village comes back and says, "No, we want this area to have service", we hypothetically could go back in, place all the beds, and splice everything back together. Um, so, that could happen, uh, but it can't be served without the ped at this point.
How, how, how big is the quote-unquote "smallest pedestal"?
Yeah.
Smallest handhole?
Handhole, or does...
And, so a handhole that we're placing in the ground, you know, is small. It depends on how much fiber's there, but the top of it will probably look like that.
Actually, I, I got clarification. I'm sorry, Josh. Um, the, the smallest one is fourteen by fourteen, so, um...
That is flush with the grass?
Flush with the grass, right.
And it's not something that a citizen will look out their front window with their flowers and see this large pedestal in their backyard, right?
It's about by the size of your pool, but flush grade.
Okay.
What doesn't that fill up with water, though?
Um, so...
This one you told us.
It does, and that's why all, all those flush, um, because, uh, handholes will do is where we coil up the fiber, it's not serviceable, it's like, it's not, you have to have a pedestal to be able to get service, because we need the facilities above ground to do that reason.
I think I don't have it, if we're gonna have that taken in there.
But if I want mine moved, you're gonna have to capper that one?
Yeah, because of the optics in there.
I got a bunch of other questions. Any other questions from the board members? All right, oh, we have a number of people that wanted to speak, I mean, and maybe to answer some other questions, but I'll just let people come up, if we could, again, limited to three minutes. Uh, Scott, Dan, Daniel, did I...
Oh, Jack?
Yes.
Are they going to just make a statement, or do they get to ask questions of the TDS?
They can have a few minutes to talk, and then if you have any questions, just address them to these folks here. I was hoping they might have answered some of your questions already, but go ahead.
Hey, so, I have one question. You said what the smallest handhole is fourteen by fourteen. What would the largest be?
Um, well, the smallest is, is what we would do the, the capping with, so it would be fourteen by fourteen, the largest. Um, if we were to put spliced materials in there, it's about twenty-four by thirty-six, so it's basically, that's not the plan for these areas.
So, we'd have the fourteen by fourteen?
Yes, that's nineteen.
All right. That's the only question I had. I just have one comment for the board for possibility for future improvement. After reading JJ's, uh, memo that was attached to the meeting notice, it appears that the only review that was done by the village pertained strictly to impact on infrastructure, and nothing was given any review by the board for the aesthetics of the community, impact on the residents and such. And I think that's an opportunity for improvement for you all on future projects to have a formal review of those things, how it impacts your constituents and, you know, the aesthetics of our community. And I think a lot of this probably could've been avoided if, you know, that would've been looked at upfront, some of these addressed in the initial contract that was, and permits that were given to TDS.
All set. All right, Tina McFadden?
Yes, um, my understanding is here, is it the yellow lines where you had easement? Okay. I live here and here, so why isn't, I'm asking the village board, why isn't there an easement behind my property when it's here? You know, you guys have an easement here and there, but when they is...
She's not giving me...
We live right here.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's, over here's an easement, right here.
It's not here. They're the red house.
Yes, and it goes there. But it was just like when, when there was, um, service to the, I was the last house in before they...
When they serviced Arrowwood.
Yeah, when they serviced the last part of Arrowwood, um, they went through our backyard and put in all kinds of mines. They said they had the easement there, and, you know, um...
And all the power?
Yeah, we watched them all put up. So, all the power came from, you know, my last junction box, so they can get electricity and a line and all that type of stuff to this neighborhood here. So, that doesn't make sense why there isn't an easement in my backyard.
I don't know how long ago that neighborhood was built, but I'm sure those easements were put in when the development plan, I'm guessing?
I mean, I've been there for twenty-four years, so, I mean, I, and then even on my plans...
It was developed over the Sherwin place.
Yeah.
So, legitimate question. I'm just not sure any of us have been there long enough to tell you why.
No, they, yeah.
They're saying easement still runs through there.
Yeah.
And then they can go through here, and they can tell us that it's...
You know, right, and, and just even having now, how high is that fourteen-inch cap going to, you know, fourteen by fourteen? How high is that gonna be? How high is that going to be in the yard? I mean, is it a couple inches thick, or...
No, it should be flat.
Completely flat, so you, you're not gonna triple it for it.
I got another question, too. So, we're here, and we're the first pedestal, right?
Right here.
Oh, right here.
I mean, we're the red house.
We're the red house here. We're gonna be the first pedestal, okay? So, if I ask you guys to move, and we don't want your service, how are you gonna get to these people?
I don't know.
That's, that's a legitimate...
That's a two-way street. I'm, I'm flexible, but I want you to be flexible, too.
Yeah, to where, you know, there's no reason why it can't be put in back there, because it's totally flat.
You just told me it was cost in the eye. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. But anyways, and then I also just wanted to, um, state just, um, two. I mean, I, this doesn't... I had some friends, I know you guys wanted to bring infrastructure to McFarland. Is that correct? Okay. I have some friends that live in McFarland. They were approached in, um, September of two thousand seventeen, October, the fall of two thousand seventeen, and someone knocked on their door, asked them if they wanted the service or could sign up early. They paid the twenty-five dollars. They are still waiting for TDS to come to their community. Now, they're told it's going to be in two thousand nineteen in the fall. That's two years later after they come to their door. These are the people that you're dealing with. She has tried to get her twenty-five dollars back. She has not, I mean, so the, the people have paid twenty-five dollars to McFarland, and they haven't received any service, and they have held their money all this time. But I just wanted to let you know that these are, you know, this is the situation, too, with TDS, so...
Oh, I, I was, we did not market in two thousand seventeen to McFarland. We were actually only building some prairies, so we didn't even have McFarland approved until two thousand eighteen, so, um, it had to have been last year where we were marketing to them.
Okay.
Two thousand eighteen, so...
Okay. But, yeah, I mean, that's just what she had told me, but anyways, so...
That's fine.
Anyways, but, so, yeah. So, like I said, I don't see why you can't move it to the backyard as one pedestal, if it's gonna be, and then they've got the easement in the backyard there, so...
All right, thank you, Tina.
Sure, you're welcome.
So, a couple of things just to address right there real quick. So, last year, to Julie's point, we did start marketing to McFarland in two thousand eighteen. We did have delays with all the rain last year and the flooding. Um, it flooded our warehouse. We lost about three point five million dollars in inventory. It delayed the project significantly, so there have been delays there. Um, we have given refunds for people who don't want, want the service, but we will be launching service there in two thousand nineteen.
All right, Matt Dunning?
Hi. Hi, Matt Dunning, three oh three Forston Drive. Uh, I got several questions, so I'll rattle through them, and then we'll try to answer as many in my three minutes, I guess. First of all, so you're talking about this elaborate proposed notification. Why might that happen the first time? Um, a lot of this could've been avoided. Um, uh, why would you think, I guess, that putting a ped in the front yard when you can look to my backyard and it's in line with all the beds was gonna be okay? When you, you talked about an efficiency calculation, your calculations take into the fact that in some cases, now you're gonna have to trench across my entire side yard, around to the back to even hit where the things gotta come into the house? Because if you think I'm gonna let you come into my property and then just drill a hole wherever you feel like it, you're nuts. It's gotta go where everything else is at. So, I mean, you're talking about efficiency. If you go in the backyard, you're aligned to my house, it'd be way, way more efficient, and I, I live, uh, right here. Um, I had an easement in the back, and I guess for mine, it must've come down to it was just cheaper for you to stick it front. Yeah. Uh, so my next question, then, is you're talking about this remediation and cleanup. What about the damage you've done outside of easements? I got pictures. I'll be happy to share them with you after the meeting, but, uh, your construction crews went twelve feet into my property. I've got damage to the bottom of a tree. I've got damage to, like I said, rock features. I've measured them all off to twelve feet, and you had six feet to work within. You did a heck of a job not touching the sidewalk, so you didn't have to pay for that, but now I got damage to all of my landscaping, and it's well within my side of the property line. That, that is unacceptable. And I, like I said, a tree and a rock, I don't know how you're gonna, how you're gonna remediate that. Uh, that, that's an issue. And I don't know if I'm the only one, but those are things that you can't really come in and fix. So, you mentioned that the plans were vetted and, when they were submitted and by, uh, the town. Where are they? Because I've seen the permit. There's no plans attached to that permit. I see that you gave the permission, but where are the plans? The plan has to be submitted. That's all bundled up into one document. Those documents do not exist, from what I can pull off of the public information. Um, and then the last thing I'd like to point out, I've seen plot maps. Your easements are not accurate for the Forston Drive. You claimed that there was nothing in the back. This house right here, there's an easement that goes all the way like that, and it was intended to service those houses and this house and this house right here. The reason the easement exists like this is because then you go down, you go around, you go into my corner, and it services these two houses. So, this is inaccurate, and I, I don't think Larry's here, but he has the, he went down to county records, he has it, and it clearly shows it. It's marked. There's annotations with all the property numbers that say, "These are what this is for". So, again, to me, it looks like it just came... So again, to me, it looks like it just came down for us to money. And now you're telling me that if I don't agree to this, I'm going to hose two-thirds of my neighborhood. Now I've got to be that jerk that lives down on Foreston Drive that shot TDS down for everybody because I'm not going to allow that in my front, my front yard. I, I'm willing to work with the flat part, but that, that's pretty crappy to do to a neighborhood, especially one where we all know each other and we're all pretty social and you're putting us all in a really bad spot here because this, depending on what somebody wants to do, I could severely anger somebody.
Thanks, Matt.
Exactly, that's sort of the lesson I miss too because of being right there, you know, yeah.
So I'm going to try to answer, I'm trying to answer as many questions I can remember as he had. So the first one, communication obviously could have been better and I think we already admitted that, like, we, we didn't, we didn't communicate efficiently. The door hangers obviously didn't work and we're putting things in place to make that better. Um, the second is restoration and construction. I think we already admitted that, yeah, we didn't do a good job. We, performance standards were not up to snuff. Um, it could have been done better. The timing of the construction could have been better as far as winter and January. There were a lot of things that could have been better there. Um, as far as your house in particular and the, this being inaccurate, I can't, I can't speak to that. This is what was provided to us from NS and my understanding, I don't know JJ, if you can say, this was the information the city provided as far as easements. Is that correct?
TDS went and got the easements. I've done my own homework, but, um...
Are these, do you know if, I guess I'm asking, do you know if this is accurate?
Again, I'm not an expert on PUEs, but when I looked, it looked like there was a gap. So I'm guessing it was what TDS, there's a, there wasn't a continuous backyard easement.
I understand it, like, you're referring to this easement right here. And yes, that is accurate. There is not a continuous easement. The easement stops he, at my property, which is right here on this corner. And there's, it, there's an easement that goes back to here. There's an easement that follows this entire back lot at an angle. I've, I've seen the maps. I've, I've walked through it, so I was trying to figure out why there wouldn't be an easement all the way through. And the reason for that is, is this property right here, there's a pet. It sits right behind a pine tree and it services this house and it services this house. And then the rest of the Aubrey, or Aubrey Court is fed off of that easement. It's not on this map. There's an easement between my property and this property that, and in the back corner of my lot, it services these two houses. So you don't need a utility easement across the entire back when, if you had the easement here, which you do, to do it.
Well, we don't, I think, is the, we don't.
Well, but you made plans on something that's inaccurate and ruined people's yards. That's the problem.
I know, but I guess I, you know...
But now you're telling us, well, sorry, but we spent the money and we're not going to fix it.
Matt, let her address the question.
I guess from our point of view, we were not here to ruin your yard. We, we would not have built there unless, if we had, if we had a known easement there. You can see the rest of the village, we've built where the easements are. We're not allowed to build where there are no easements. And so to the best of our knowledge, and you can see, you know, where there are easements is where we built.
Where did you get these comes from?
I don't know where they get them from.
These come from our engineering department, so we can't speak to that.
I mean, they're pulling the, they're, they're, they're using public records for easements. You know, we asked the same questions. Why didn't we, and then I asked the question too, how hard is it to get an easement? And apparently it's very difficult to get an easement once the houses are built. So, um, I guess I would just ask that you give us at least some benefit of the doubt. We, we don't want to be here and you don't trust in these issues. We would rather, you know, this not had gone, had gone well. So, um, you know, it's, it's, um, I feel very strongly like we're doing the best we can do and we are apologizing profusely for the construction errors in this area. And we're trying to remedy the situation with the easement, but, um, but it's, it's hard to hear that, you know, you think we're deliberately not building here. This is a specific area where we did not have an easement.
But we have an easement to our, do you understand our situational, we got an easement to a backyard town. And I don't understand why you want to use it.
I mean, it's just weird how it just skips from Heather Drive to those two houses. I mean, and then it's gone to...
The records doesn't show an easement there.
Basically, see them lay wires to the, to the last, last part of our subdivision.
We could see facilities back here too, but that doesn't mean that we can just build there without a recorded easement.
Exactly. I mean, we can all look into it.
We have some other people also that wanted to speak. Bob Cooperkins?
I live on T R L here, right there in that, where Red Boxville belongs. Last time I was here, I said that box is coming out. I'll pull it out with my pickup truck. I had no threat. That was a problem. I will pull it out. And Monday night we were here, the guy was going to shut this down. On Wednesday morning, here's the guy out by the lawn. He's got a fire. I asked him what he was doing. He said, I just shut it down. And he said, I'm just doing what I'm told. I said, good. Do what you're told. Now get the hell out of here. Listen to me. Get out of here. And I said, I broke up the street. Go tell them to get out to him. And they both left. And who in the hell is BS? We have been blindsided by you people. I'm eighty years old and you're twenty, twenty years old. You ain't going to blindside me. Here about a week ago, maybe a little later, some guy called me, BS, I don't remember the name. Reason I didn't get it, if it gets me a scam call, then I'll pay attention. I think there's a scam call too. He said we were, he said, I want to apologize. I said, I apologize. Don't, I don't work. I ain't going to get it done. He said, what do you want? What? He said, I understand you don't want that box out there. I said, I own that. He said, ain't that, I have every pullout. I said, no, no, he said, what we got to do is we got to contact everybody. And if anybody doesn't want that box, go take it out. Unless you better bring a, a pretty good crew because a little lot of guys want it. And we said, no, no, we're going to remove and then fix up the, the damage and put grass in it, make, make it all right, ready again. It was ain't quite that simple. You do throw the grass. I got four damn holes in front of my living room window, gravel. Why? They reduced it. See down that gravel? I used to rent a house, throw my living room rug, you'll grow there. No, 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 he said, no. I said, calm down, he said. He said, man, everything we put back to the owner, uh, the way they want it. I don't know. Ain't that dumb. Don't, I mean, your little improvements again, or trying to, ain't that stupid? It'll never be done right. You can't dig that gravel out of there and put dirt in there. Have you done spots with that gravel for years? You can never get grass to eat the match what's there. There's so many different blends and I said, don't, don't tell me different. I worked the interior of construction. We did roadwork, we seeded. I said, there, I hole, I drove some of my full underhalls, seed out across. And I said, there ain't, if you're lucky, you take fifty to the lawn, you'd be lucky, you get four, it's a grab.
All right, Bob, that's three minutes. Thank you.
How come there's else? Does it have, or I get nothing?
Everybody has three minutes, but thank you.
Somebody will yield, Bob.
Well, we got a different, Derek's scammed again. But I'd like to know, when's that guy going to come take these out? Is that another BS story or what?
We need to get our construction permits back before we can do any construction.
They have to get a permit back from us before they're going to do anything. They can't do anything.
Well, he wanted me to do that box when it comes out. I said, it'll be ruined because I don't give a damn what's to go with it. I think they're in the street. Well, don't they? He said, they're going to need it somewhere else. I said, not down here, you all.
Okay. Uh, John Brandonberg, did I, did I?
Yeah. You're right, Ben. John, I live on Heather Court and I was fortunate enough not to have a front yard box. I, they came into the backyard box. They have a timetable for reconstruction and fixing all that stuff because I had the property damage. My dog fence is no longer working. I'm probably going to incur a fine from the police chief pretty soon if my dog's skipping the line, so, uh...
Yeah, I think we, we tried to answer his question. We have to get the permits back and then we can get people in there. And then as far as timeline, as, as long as it takes to get the work done.
It sounds like the subcontractor did the work on February sixth. We're almost into April. We're doing these meetings. So I guess when you get permits back, it is what it is.
I just want to say that it's our highest priority to get it fixed.
I flagged my fence so it wouldn't get wrecked and still be wrecked. Cigarette butts, clean up, just simple stuff. My kids play back there. I mean, it's a mud hole now. My dog is in the mud. I mean, obviously it's mud everywhere, but it's one of those things that we have to get fixed. And as far as these front pedestal goes, I, like I said, I don't have one, uh, but my neighbors do and other than, since two thousand seven, it's a cosmetic thing. I mean, there are very few that are on Heather Drive at least have already been landscaped in. They look nice. The curb appeal looks good. Now you're making all these homeowners do that again with a box that they didn't even know was coming. So I don't know if it's communication on my part that I wasn't following this close enough, but I'm pretty sure if, I got a letter that says, hey, there's going to be a front pet in my, in your yard. It's going to be six feet off your driveway or twelve feet off your garage. I'm pretty sure I would have been on top of things a little bit. You know, so I don't know if that's a TDS thing or if it's a village thing or if it's just me not caring enough.
No, there was no notifications. There was no notifications.
Because I think that's something that the village or whosoever responsibility it is needs to be helped accomplish because...
Did you provide your address and everything to TDS?
I did, yeah. Like I said, I'm ready to catch up. I mean, I didn't know this was a problem until it was a problem.
Sure.
That's, that's, that's the problem. And now we're screwed because they're not going to take it back out. They're not going to fix it and because of the expenses, so I don't, we could save a lot of...
Thank you.
Thanks, John. And you can line up the trees.
Jason Russell?
Just got a couple of questions, I guess, moving forward. If, once you do get the permits back, um, is there going to be a formal process or notification for residents who do have damage? My dog fence got damaged too. I was able to contact TDS or Zeke, the number I got from. Somebody came out, mentioned that your dog fence will be fixed within the week. I'm still waiting for the dog fence to be fixed. Um, I do have an easement in my backyard, so I don't know if it's four or two guys or both, but my understanding, uh, you have thirty-three feet from the center line of the roadway, which you guys are well up beyond that thirty-three feet. You're into people's curliche, which is private property, and there is easements in the back. I don't understand why easements in the backyard weren't used.
All right. Well, once we get the permits resolved, they said they're going to be out there as soon as possible. Do they have your contact information to get a hold of you so that you know when this is going to happen? There was another gentleman here. I don't know if it was, uh, Jason. Was he the one taking, he's going to take your information?
We'll make sure we get your...
I mean, my suggestion maybe is moving forward to this neighborhood here.
Sure, can you sit down and wait your turn, please?
To this, to this neighborhood here in the future neighborhoods that you're going to be going through is maybe communicate to them that if there's damage to your property or things there and there, here's the number to contact so we're not monitoring board members or stopping in Village Hall.
Typically, that's on the door hanger, like a very specific number, so, um, yeah, I understand you didn't get door hangers. But that is our process. We will improve that process and make sure it's in a direct mail letter or something so you have that number handy.
Right. If they give you a direct mail letter, it's going to come in your mailbox. They'll have more attention to it and be able to know what's going on and when. So that's what they're going to do.
And yeah, and the phone number is always on it, so that's part of our process. We'll just make sure that it's more efficient.
And then is there any response on the thirty-three feet from the center of the roadway?
That's, I mean, there's generalizations, but without having the plat in front of me, I'm not, I don't want to answer anything.
Because my understanding, easements can run within thirty-three feet of the center of the roadway and once you're beyond the curliche, which typically is the sidewalk, sidewalk to the residents, that's considered a curliche and that's private property.
Well, that's a typical road right away. In some instances here, we found they had different PUEs in the front as well. So there's the village right away, uh, which is that typically, again, not saying specifics on any roads here without looking, but a foot behind the sidewalk. But there's also additional PUEs that we found in some of these platted areas that were, I'm not sure why, but were put in addition. Thank you. Yep, Jessica O'Connor?
Hi, I'm at two two four Foreston here, the last house on the corner. First of all, I want to strongly protest that our neighborhood was notified in any way. I know there have been comments from other village trustees that there were door hangers and maybe they blew away. Um, we received no such notification along with other neighbors that I've spoken with. Um, so again, I want that on record that we were not notified in any way. I've seen on social media where there have been other door hangers or other such notification given that gave numbers to call, um, where people were asked to notify if there were any type of dog fences or underground sprinklers. That was not received in our neighborhood in any way. Um, I, again, like a couple of people have had here, our invisible dog fence is cut. Um, so for the past couple of months, we've had no invisible dog fence to keep our dog in the yard, which has been a significant impact on us as well. Um, I will admit that I've strongly relied on my neighbors that are here on Foreston and its surrounding neighborhoods to kind of speak on my behalf. I just want to echo all of the sentiments that have been stated in previous board meetings as far as the frustration, um, the lack of cleanup. Um, we are, also have boxes in our backyard that could have easily been accessed. I would be completely happy for TDS to have access to those or to group those together. Um, I also want to, um, as much as you've probably been vilified, to thank you for calling a couple of times to make sure you got my feedback. I know you left a message, I think on a Friday, and then also called back on a Monday to make sure you had our, our voice from our particular house. So I do appreciate that. I know you're probably in a difficult situation, given the information that you have from the village and easements and right of ways that are concerned here too. Um, but again, my specific frustration is around this lack of notification. Um, and would be happy to have any of these pets in the backyard or to have a vault, but where I'm located here, actually I'm on a dead end, but part of my property extends past the, the road. And so that pet has been put in the middle of my front yard instead of on a corner or on a property line. So that adds to my frustration as far as yard maintenance is concerned, as far as access to my house or my yard is concerned. I now have a pet in the middle of my front yard. If you look at my house from right to left. So what's going on here is, is to me beyond acceptable when you combine that with the level of frustration, with the lack of notification here. Honestly, I think I'm extremely disappointed and the Cottage Grove Board, to be honest with you, that this has gone on with the lack of notification. And if this was approved, I think you, in a way, you should be proud that you have the number of people that are here and expressing this level of frustration because this expresses the pride that we have in our homes and our yards in our community. So in a way, you should be happy that you have the level of frustration that you have here because it shows that we care about our environment. And I hope deeply that this is a lesson learned as we move forward and that as Cottage Grove continues to expand, that things like this will be considered more carefully as we look to expand our community and to bring in additional services, additional restaurants, additional businesses into Cottage Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I just had one question for you. Some of these beds I've seen a good job done, really restoring it, and some I've seen like these guys have said it's not good at all. So are you the same people doing all of it or?
So I think in this specific neighborhood or neighborhoods here, the main issue was the timing. Um, and I think that's on us, you know, the winter construction or pushing winter as far as we could and getting in there in January, February was really what caused the mess because the ground was cold. And then we shut it down and we couldn't get in there to restore anything because all the snow came. So I think the timing, uh, was, was on our part, um, a mistake. So that's kind of why it is what it is. And to your point, why are some areas better than others? Um, I, I think it's because the other areas were done in a time of the year that was more suitable.
Do you have a quick question?
Yeah, I do. So you, you had said that you're not willing to move or fix any of this because the money's been spent. You just admitted yourself. You poorly chose the timing, so why is that our fault? Why do we have to suffer being told, oh, it's got to stay in the front or you just don't get it because you made an extremely poor choice. Your words, not mine. You pushed it.
So regardless of what time of year it would have been done, they would have been put in the exact same spot that they are today.
But you're telling us, right? But again, through your lack of communication, your poor choice. You just, you just told us, now, again, I have to make a choice. Do everybody over?
Yep. So to, today, I mean, regardless of the time of year they would have been put in, we, the plans were submitted, it was approved. We were going to put them exactly where they are, whether it happened in May or whether it happened in January.
I wouldn't hope that, though. I mean, if you put it in June and the pedal was perfect and you still did that kind of...
All right, Cindy Shelter? Did I say that right? Sorry. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I live on 413 Tierra Trail, right about here. Next to, um, lab. And I have a whole set of utility boxes in the rear of my house. I would, wanted to go on record as wanting to move that to the rear of the yard. And I also had a question as to why we have four houses and there's at least three boxes on our one block, and to me, I don't like the look of them in the front of the house. Along with, there's separate piles of gravel that I'd like to get rid of, and I didn't think to look at anything hanging on my door, because all sorts of people hang pamphlets on my front door.
Sure.
So I didn't think to look there as far as contacting anyone. Is there a way we can contact or put our names on the list?
Yes.
In person?
Yeah, we'll make sure we've got your information before we leave here.
Thank you. And I also echo a lot of the frustrations here. Now I'm afraid if they do move it, they'll cut the dark fence line, and then is that covered under? I wasn't aware that you fixed that then, if it is cut? Okay, because it costs. Because it costs a lot of money to call the fence people out and replace the wires. So that was one of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Cindy. All right, Abby McDowell?
Abby McDowell, 208 Heather Drive. I am right here. I have a pedestal in my backyard. Don't have a problem with it, I have other pedestals in my backyard. The problem is the place where they put the pedestal. I have three other pedestals for my other electric and everything else. And when I, the contractor came to put in the new pedestal, I asked him, okay, just put it on the other side with the other ones? And he said no, because if we did, then these two houses would not be served. So my question is, is can we in fact move it to the other side of my yard without having to disrupt service to the other two?
Well, we can look into that.
I can't answer that for you today. Unfortunately, we're not.
No, I understand, you're not the engineers, you're in everything else, that's, you know, but that's my big thing, is that, you know, I have other pedestals back there, just throw it next to the other ones and we'll be all fine, as long as the guard lifts anything. Also, just wanted to reiterate what most everybody else here said, the no notification. And I do believe it is an FCC requirement that you guys notify that you are doing construction in people's yards. Like I said, I don't know if it's a 30-day or a 60-day or 90-day notification, but I do know that it is a requirement from the FCC that it gets done. And nobody here can say that they received a direct mailer, window thing, door hanger, or anything like that. So, and I know that you guys sent out a letter, you know, apologizing for it, but still, it sounded that just really soft. That's all I have.
Thank you. Scott Sherman?
My beef is not with you, my beef is with the people you have installing this stuff. And this map is not the same map that I saw. I'm on Public Works, when you started, okay, I went down, saw, I dragged the map out, and you guys brought out the utility line all the way down, and you're putting this third house and moving that backyard. That has changed. I don't know who authorized that change, but somebody did. This is not the map. This is originally, it's right there. And as far as, was that the original agreement from the board, when they came to here and made that they were gonna follow the utility lines in order for the install? Okay? That doesn't seem to have happened. I've taken pictures, I've been understanding all these right in here, there's an easement in the back, okay? What you did, you came down this side, okay? And then the people that live over here, you went to their front end. Why? Their utilities are in the back. I mean, somebody made that decision, okay? And now you came out here, you drilled a hole all the way here, and you put it in front of these people. Why? Right, your utility is in the back. You came down through here, you said you didn't have access. I got pictures. You went under fences, solid fences, and everything came up in their yards. I mean, I could see where you could say you didn't have access. But the way places, you don't, I mean, you have that, you put all the utilities, and those heads are already in front in some of these places, that's correct, utilities. And further down here, going around the whole side, that's true, utilities are up. Wires, these things. I mean, I'd like to, you need to ask somebody, I don't know if the contractor that did this job didn't do his due diligence on how to do this, but somebody failed. And then somebody gave them permission to do it cheap and easy. It's not our job to get paid this, okay? There was another gentleman here that talked last night, that said these crazy pedestals can cost us up to 5% of our value as far as when we're selling a home. You got $400,000, $500,000 homes in here. 5%? Yes. Okay, yeah. 5% and $500,000? It's $25,000. You wanna pay each one of us that? Or stick a pedestal on that front yard? Why should we take the gap? I mean, you guys are in a tough place, you know? It just makes no sense, you know? Somehow things got changed, and you got yourself in a jam, and then shoot down.
And I think it's, when you do find out that people do have easements in their backyard and things, it should be, it should be on you to fix it, you know, and move the pedestals to the back. That'll be your cost, to, you know, move the stuff in the back.
Scott.
Okay, I got a note here, this is, and I took it.
Scott.
And I took pictures of where the, we showed the job. And then some of the pedestals are required.
Can you verify your address for me? Because I can find 526 on Hawthorne Court.
Oh, I think it would be normally...
526 Hawthorne, right?
Yeah, 526 Hawthorne. I think if you look on Heather, it's like 85 or something like that.
It's eight, oh, it's 85.
Yeah, here, I'll show you exactly. It's this one right here. Yeah, this is Hawthorne, yeah. I see how many easements right now, but now, I put one in my front yard, and then service these other homes.
Suzanne Warburg?
Hi, Suzanne Warburg, I'm 229 Foreston, so I'm, I think that's red one right here. So I actually have a question for the board. I think it would help us if we could actually see a map, maybe that's provided by the board and for the Village instead of TDS, of where the easements are. Because I think it's very hard for us to understand, Cindy and I, we know that it's city property behind our house, right? We mow it. We know that there's a utility box behind there. But what we don't understand is, is that an easement, or is that not an easement? And so I think if we can visually understand that, that'll help to go a long way to say, I think what we're hearing from you is, there wasn't a continuous easement, right? All the way around to where you needed to get. But it would be helpful if we could see where that gap was, so that we understand, and aren't constantly all saying, hey, we have an easement, we have an easement, we have an easement. Yeah, yeah, great, but that's not the point, right? The point is, where was the gap and can there be anything done? So I think that would help tremendously. And I think from our, I guess, you said that there is, if you would get permission, right, from everyone, there is and or was a possibility to put it behind. Do we even have, can you give us some sort of scope of, what is that cost? If you were to get, some people are saying, hey, all of us say yes. What is that a figure?
So just, just to recap real quick, to, on the comments of the easements is, there are some places that we built that we did not have back utility easement. There are, so we went to the front. There are some places we placed in the front, and we had back easement, and we chose to place it in the front. So it's a mix of both in these areas. To redesign this entire area and rebuild and do it entirely in the back, conservative estimate, there's 145 houses here.
You're talking about this?
Well, just this area here.
Or at least this area.
Well, I mean, all of, all of this is front pedestal, all through down here. So if you're gonna do all of it, I mean, figure conservatively, $2,000, over $2,000 a household, you're over $300,000 to redesign and construct the whole area. I mean, and I'm just, that is a made up, that's a made up, that's a made up number. I mean, you can't hold me to that, I just made that up.
I think what we're looking for is scope, right? Is it $500? Is it $1,500? Is it $5,000? So I think people at least, right, that helps us say, okay, yeah, if you had to come to my front door and said, I'm gonna put it in the front, or I can put it in the back for five grand, you're probably gonna get a different answer than if you say, I can put it in the front, or I can put it in the back for 500, right? I think that, again, will help people understand, you're saying, couldn't do it, we would like, would have liked to know, I guess we would like now, to know what our option would have, would be, to help that. So, map, cost.
So just to be clear, because we keep kinda, it gets confusing here. And it's been made at the executive level, we are not going to be moving the facilities as they are today. So what's proposed in this neighborhood is, if individuals do not want the pet, we can remove it and put a flush mount grave, those people cannot get serviced. I understand that that puts people in the neighborhood in a bad decision, or a bad predicament. There is no good answer at this point. I mean, we're gonna continue to hear from people, it's gonna be the same stuff over and over again. But these are the two areas, these are the decisions we've come to. It's not an easy one, and there's no good way to go about it. There's going to be unhappy people at the end of all of this. As far as the restoration goes, we're gonna come in and work diligently to fix everything that has been broken, and get our construction standards up to par. As soon as we get our permits back, that will get done. We can work on an individual basis, we have a process in, already in motion, where people can call a number, and we can have our NS people work with them to get restored. But, and people can continue to come up, there's not an easy answer for where we're at. The capital's been spent, the fiber's in the ground, at this point, it is what it is.
We do have one other question. Do you have an answer? Jeff?
A couple of things. Jeff Hansen, 104 Harberry Court. Just for you guys' information, if I could orient myself here. The Village, I live here. Does everybody see that? The Village owns all this space back here in Foreston, so in fact, this green space would've been a real easy dig and placement. As it was laid out as a pride site, this location here, and I'm dating myself, and Lee and I, Lee and I are, I think are the only ones here that have been here long enough to...
Yeah, but I didn't have anything to do with the easements, so.
So we, we both saw this subdivision and this subdivision, and I think the grims are here. And so, a lot of what we're talking about in terms of pets and cable and the infrastructure were around the rear of the homes. What I find frustrating, and I think a lot of people will here too, if they were to go with your service, where you're placing the pets, you're gonna be literally digging up the other half of their yard where the cable never came into the home. So for example, you place the pet for my home right here, my service is back here, and all the cables were around the rear of the home. So in terms of redigging and establishing another communication system, I think it's gonna entail a lot more work than meets the eye. I guess, I'm reminded of a movie, Cool Hand Luke, just the lack of communications here. And I know we have a lot of people on the board, I don't know, Lee, how many, how many board changes have we had since these subdivisions? And we're trying to bring everybody up to speed.
Couple hundred.
And the fact remains, we've got several administrators and several directors of Public Works that have been here. The challenge is due diligence and that communications. Now, Lee, one aspect that hasn't been addressed is the STC.
Okay, I have addressed that and did not, I reviewed the contract, and you should've gotten a copy of the memo that I did to the board, where I don't think that that is, that is an impediment in terms of, that that stops this construction. The STC contract doesn't apply to this situation.
It may not, but if you were pushed, come to the shove and push it on US Cellular or Frontier, they may have a different viewpoint. So did you guys know about the one-mile radius of the STC site, no easements?
I don't know what the STC is.
I'm not familiar with.
They're not building a cell tower.
No, they're not building a cell tower, but you read, you read the language.
It's telecommunications.
It's telecommunications.
This is telecommunications.
By our attorneys.
Okay. The thing is, you know, I actually went deep into the code on this, and, I mean, the US code. So some of the, some of the sites that were there were unfortunately, like, from the criminal code, and had nothing to do with this. And we did, we did review this, and it's taught, this is a mobile service, a mobile service facility in STC, and it's not applicable to this situation. And Jeff, again, I had meant, you should've gotten a copy of this, happy to give one to you, but we did look into that thoroughly.
Lee, I beg to differ with you. I think, I think, I think if you were to run that by 100 people, you'd probably get...
I understand, there's a difference of opinion.
So, long story short, I think communications is a huge issue. The second issue is the magnitude that this impacts everybody here. This should not be a Village employee agreement form, it should be a developer's agreement that should've been signed by everybody here. It should not be at JJ's discretion or Matt's discretion, this is a universal discretion. It impacts everybody's access or easement to their property, and it's shared by you guys. It's shared by everybody here. And like Matt was saying, if he wants to so-called limit other people, he shouldn't be able to limit anybody else having access to, to the fiber. It should be an easement that's shared by everybody, and that should be managed by the Village Board.
I agree with that, and I've told JJ that, and I can guarantee you, JJ wants nothing to do with approving another one of these ever again. But I think sending it through Public Works and Public Work and the Board makes a lot of sense. Having said that, it's 300 pages, and, you know, JJ detailed what his department reviews, and, you know, we were told from day one that these would not be in the backyard, so he wasn't reviewing these to be in the front yard. That's what it comes down to. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Can you just clarify, is there a contract that was signed between TDS and the Public Works?
No.
Who just approved?
So it's a right...
They didn't do what they said that they were gonna do, it's an breach of contract.
It's a right-of-way permit.
So they can just propose anything and then just...
Well, there was a, last year, last May, there was, there was a meeting and a proposal from TDS. And then, in exchange for agreeing to a developer agreement, TDS wanted a contribution from the Village. The Village Board declined to make that contribution. And so, the only authority that we have is the right-of-way permit. And to Jeff's point, we've also looked into that. I'm not sure that we have the authority to make them sign a developer agreement if they don't voluntarily, if you take a look at the PSC guidelines, there are limitations on what the municipality can do. We've tried to look at this from every possible angle, and that was one of them, so.
All right, that's...
I don't think that anything that you're saying to me is in the minutes of the Village Board meetings.
That's all, that's all the people we had registered to speak, so you've kinda heard the main concerns here, there's several of them, obviously the restoration, service or no service, easements, things like that, fixing it. And, I mean, like we said, our only authority is the permit. So, obviously, we feel as strong, we're supposed to want this done, right? Whether they get service or not. Sir?
Quick question, they keep talking about phone numbers. We received a letter, apologies for what's going on, but it was the phone number of that letter, did you, it was a... for what's going on, but it was the phone number of that letter, did you, was it the phone number today?
Okay.
To contact you, in case we...
Yeah, we...
I can get your number here and, and make sure we reach out to you, perhaps, and connect you with the people that you need to be, and we'll obviously start a new line of communication with the community, um, that will have all the contacts...
You refer to the contractor that's doing the work, Zeke, all they do is give you the runaround, and say, well, TDS told us to do this.
I'm just the first one to add, I'm sorry.
You refer to the contractor that's doing the work, Zeke, MITAC?
That's the number that's answering the door here. All those guys do is give us the runaround and say, we're doing what TDS told us to do.
Can we get, can we get a TDS number that the citizens can call, and Matt can post it on, on the village website?
Yep.
All right, so you'll give us a, an actual TDS number, not a contractor number, and then, Matt, will you be able to post that on the website?
Yep.
All right.
Because the minute we did that, Zeke said, well, we're looking into it, and then two days later, they're cutting and running fiber. So, if you guys had just stopped and actually looked into this, when you said, when Zeke said you were looking into it, you would've already saved a ton of money. That's the other reason this is such a hard pill to swallow. We were complaining about this the minute that the holes were dug.
So, I'm sorry.
Zeke is the MITAC contact person, but we keep getting the number two, and all he does is say, TDS told us to do this, and off he took, we'll look into it, and then two days later, his crew's in there. You guys, you know, you said you spent this money, the money was spent because when you said you were looking into it, they just went and worked in the other neighborhood for a couple days, and then they show right back up in our neighborhood, and, like I said, I came home, and all of a sudden, I got dirt all over the place, I was like, what the heck happened? They're looking. Well, I lifted the pet up, the fiber's been cut in there. I'm like, well, what the heck? So, really, you just fed me a lie. That's what just happened. So, now you're saying, well, we spent the money, and we've, we've done this infrastructure, but we've approached, and have been trying to get this addressed well before the orange tube went in the ground. Long before that, and we were given the runaround. Everybody passed the buck, and we could get to you guys, and finally had to go right and post to social media, and get, we had to get a bunch of people together to get somebody to do something. So, like I said, if you tell us, well, money's spent, the work's been done, that's a tough pill to swallow. It's not my fault, I tried talking to somebody, and I got blown up.
Any comments from board members, questions from board members?
Yeah, um...
Jeff?
So, your, you originally said, as we were talking, that you, you agreed you'd made a mistake.
We, we, as far as where the pets, pedestals are located, that is not a mistake. That was permitted and approved if they are in easements. So, the location is, is not a mistake. The construction portion and the standards that have been in the neighborhood, that's on us. Like, we, we need to fix that, it needs to be better.
So, having said that, you're saying that you threw out a number that you were just guessing, the three hundred K to, to, you know, move these to the backyard, but you're not willing to do that?
We're, I mean, so, my question is, is if, is it the board's position that it should be punitive to TDS when the location of the pet has already been approved and permitted as an illegal easement? We should have done...
No, I get, I get what you're saying there, but you just got done saying the construction wasn't that great.
And we're gonna fix that, that's, that's gonna be fixed. I mean, and this is, I mean, this happens in all of our projects, we have areas all over the country in which we do these fiber overbuilds, and pockets in neighborhoods don't go well, and we have to fix them. This is, this happens to be one of them, um, it's, it's very unfortunate, and like I said before, I think the reason the construction was so poor was because of the time that happened during the winter, um, the ground's frozen, it's, it's not as easy as when we work in the summer, um, and then, like you said before, you know, our restoration cottage grove as a whole has probably been better than average, I think in this area, it's not representative of our work in the, in, in the village as a whole.
And then, one of the things you had suggested was, and I think it's a brilliant idea, and I think we should do it, is, once these permits are reestablished, and you start working on fixing that up, meeting with the neighborhood, and sitting down with them face-to-face, and not getting the runaround that Matt feels like he's gotten there, and, and actually making sure that each homeowner is satisfied with the outcome. And working with them, if they have to explain to a neighbor, you know, I don't want a pedestal, but you might not have service, they're, I, I don't expect these guys to talk to the neighbors about that, maybe that's something you could help with that, in that meeting, would be a suggestion I would give.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think the, um, so, I think a lot of this could've been avoided if you had notified this area that you were coming. Just showing up, coming home and seeing a hole dug in your yard is not, um, the best thing to have happen. Um, and, it is unusual that, um, this is where all the pedestals go in the front, that this is how it's been planned, but then, none of them got the notification. Like, it's highly suspect, and that's what I think a lot of them have frustration with. This could have gone differently if they would've been notified, they would've called sooner, and they would've known what was going on. So, in that respect, um, I think that I'm really disappointed in TDS, in that you aren't fixing it at all. You're putting the onus on them to decide what to do to their properties now, either have the pedestal, or nothing and affect all their neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, um, one point to that, though, is we've been told by many of these people, they don't want it in their yard at all, they're angry, and we understand that. So, um, you know, I don't, we're not trying to be punitive, we're just, we're actually trying to do what they've asked us to do, um, with the least amount of additional damage to the yard. So, um, from that standpoint, I think we're, we're trying to do the best we can do. Um, you know, it's, it's hard because people have different priorities for their own homes. We'll, we'll do the best we can do.
But, see, at the executive level, they didn't care, like, that's the thing, you had already decided that it would be the front yard, without giving them any options.
And you've already decided that you're not gonna, if they say, yes, go ahead and move it to my backyard, that, no, you're out of line, it's gonna cost us extra money, we're not gonna do it. Doesn't seem right.
Again, like, this area?
Exactly.
Okay, Alex, you've gotta sign up with...
Yeah, 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 right along.
Yeah, if you got something.
Yeah. So, a couple of questions, Alex, just a question, 501 Killing Trail, not in this neighborhood. The May meeting was mentioned, who's Drew Peterson?
Where are you at?
Not in this neighborhood, I'm behind the post office.
Drew Peterson is the, uh, one of the vice presidents of the company who originally approached this.
Okay, so Drew Peterson, um, question was asked, what type of construction you do, how disruptive is the work? We bring fiber from a neighboring community, then it would be connected to the green box in the backyard, and then come into the home. Okay, so that's what the executive said, so you can remind them of that. The second thing was asked twice, box in the front yard, my interest is in the house in the back. That has never been answered, and a lot of questions asked, and you haven't answered anything. And I understand, you're not the engineers, the right people, the wrong people, you knew what you were walking into, and you didn't bring the right people. How are you entering people's houses from the front yard when they need to be in the back?
Sure.
You know, and the second thing, third one, and then I'll, I'll yield to you. Landscaping, I don't know that you need a whole lot of permits for that. If people's yards are screwed up, go there and fix it, start tomorrow.
So, to address your last point first, we met multiple times with Matt and JJ, and we said, hey, can we come in and start fixing stuff? And they were concerned that if they gave us the permission to start restoration, the village board would view that as construction and going against their will, and therefore, they said they wouldn't authorize restoration, so we were on hold, and we all held. So, we did come out and try to say, hey, let's get started, let's get fixing stuff, it's getting warm, it's that time of year, and out of respect for their decision, the board, we, we all, we put it on hold, and we understand that that's not ideal.
Well, I would clarify, it wasn't a, a decision on our part.
Right.
The motion was made as a full stop and pull of the permit, so...
Right.
Well, doesn't mean you can't fix people's yards.
The permit was pulled on Monday night, and on Wednesday, you still had staff who was pulling cable. So, don't tell me that we stopped, and you didn't continue. You did continue, two days, two and a half days after, after agreement was pulled.
Sir, if you got something, quickly?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I address...
Yeah, absolutely, he's got it.
All good to you, and then I'm gonna address him real quick. As far as entering your home, um, we do not have to, we can enter your home in any place, um, it does not have to be where your existing facilities are coming in. So, we will do a drop, but when I say drop, it's, that's just the line from the pedestal to your home, um, it does not have to be where the existing facilities are coming in, we can enter almost anywhere, and the yard installers work with the homeowner to decide, based on each house is different. So, um, it, it can be done, it doesn't have to come in with a coaxist coming in.
So, then you dig up the yard to go...
Um, so, if you, or, if you pre-register for service, we do what we call the pre-barrier drop, and they kinda zip it in the ground, but yes, there will be, a line dug in the yard. If you order service after that pre-registration period, you'll have what's called a temporary drop, a temp drop, and it's laid on your ground until a crew comes by later, and then buries it back into the ground. So, the answer to the question is yes.
And then, like, a whole house to get in?
Uh, depending on where they have to enter, yes. Yep.
I think the board's beginning to understand why TDS initially said, give us a two hundred thousand dollar incentive, 'cause I, that would've probably cleared up this issue. But, no one, no one told us anything about anything with that, or, or told us that these would be issues.
Sir, is there a question?
Yes, one question. Uh, first meeting that we had on this, I brought up on your website, you got a little blog on there that shows the, the TDS fiber, how we're building in your neighborhood, and it shows that they do this, just this little tiny hole in your yard. Why is that posted up when it's so contrary to the way you're doing construction, if you're looking to remedy this and avoid issues with future building sites? I mean, anybody that sees this, and sees what you actually do, the way they tear up your yards, they're gonna be repeating this situation over and over again. This is just pure fiction, it's on there, at least from what I've seen in any of our interviews.
Cynthia, you have another person that registered to speak, Cynthia Nelson?
I'm Cynthia Calm Nelson, I live at 233 Forest and Drive. This is my third time speaking, so I don't think I need to reiterate all of the concerns that I've had, I think everyone has done a fantastic job mentioning that, and I'm sure you've heard it all. Um, I would like to see a difference, or the correct plot map, just so we can see it. Um, and then you just also mentioned that if we signed up for, with the twenty-five dollar credit, that you would just, I mean, automatically coming in and putting that in, from the box to our house, if we signed up for it.
If you signed up for service, you go on a pre-drop list, so that we pre-barrier drop?
So, I did, I signed up, I was very excited that TDS was coming, I signed up with the twenty-five dollar, six months ago or whatever, and I do not want service. I do not want any lines run into my house. I'm on record for saying that, I don't want that.
Is there anything else?
I, uh, I'm gonna get three minutes away, so, I, I never, never get the answer. I got one, one question down here, two for attorney over there. So, questions, so, please?
Yeah.
I'm talking about what your name is, that, don't wanna call me, you're beautiful.
That's great.
I told you, I was gonna be taken out. Remember? I was wondering if that guy was, I thought he was really, really friendly, that he really worked, more, more...
One front, yeah, more friendly.
I just wanted to know if that was a legitimate caller, that just... Okay. Yeah.
That's what we're here to figure out.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You're the attorney, I guess, I got two questions.
Yep.
One is, uh, we talked about the regway, easement, easement?
Uh-huh.
They pay taxes on your easement, but, uh, that means then that the city wants to do something, they got the regway to come in and do that, right?
Right.
Okay, and that easement, uh, my last question. We got a lot of drivers going around there, people walking their dogs and everything. So, if I would put, I thought this would be a real nice civic duty, and I'll pay for it. I'll put a park potty there, where people can stop, and right next to them are the ones with the libraries, so they can get a book, and I'll pay for it. Now, then, when I pull that box off, which I'm gonna, not when I'm gonna, that, if I'm gonna, I'll be breaking the law, I imagine, and that's good, because laws are made for years and years and years, laws are made to protect the guilty. I'm leaving guilty right now, I'll put a park so, but then, the law protects me, right?
Not if you do something like that.
I'm gonna go with the park potty there.
All right. So, you've heard what the representatives from TDS had to say, I think they have...
Is there a little quick question? What is the approach on the boxes that are in the front? Is there a way to hide them? Can you plant things around them, so that you can disguise them?
Yes.
Is there a restriction on how close you can get with plants?
Um, maybe, but I don't know what that is. But, yeah, we actually offered, um, to, uh, pay each homeowner ten or fifty dollars, maybe some kind of landscaping credit, so that you could put brush, bushes or something around it.
But, the way that the contractor did it, my, our property, we're, we're neighbors, it's so close to the sidewalk, I can't, how am I gonna get the village after me for repeating the sidewalk with vegetation? Like I said, you guys kinda cut me at the knees.
And is it two fifty per pedestal, because some people have more than one pedestal in their yard, don't they?
I have a, everybody has only, have it...
If you don't need one, please.
I have a handful in.
Cindy had one.
I got that too.
Two on one side.
All right.
We just have a giant hole.
So, Lee, where do we go from here?
Well, here's my, this is my question to the board, and that is, um, now you, you've heard a presentation by TDS, we currently have, um, pulled their, uh, their permit, and so, my question to the board is, what do you want from TDS to release the permit?
I think one, one part of it is the restoration, I have no problem if they start the restoration tomorrow, but as far as doing any more work, I think the neighborhood meeting that we were talking about is probably the next step.
Well, I, I don't mean to interrupt, Jack, but, um, I wanna make sure that when we get done tonight, um, that everyone understands what is gonna happen, and when it's gonna happen. I understand that, that you can't start unless the board says differently, but a cer, on a certain date, but, you know, I, I want the citizens to know that, uh, once the permit is reinstated, that X will happen, Y will happen, and, and when. What's gonna be offered to each, I mean, just really pulling everything together, because right now, there's some promises, there's a lot of discussion, and I, I think the board just has to say, well, we're not releasing a, we're not doing anything with the permit until this happens.
That's a good thing, thanks. Any other questions from board members?
The only other question I had is, I mean, so we have thirty or thirty-five people here, I mean, I, I don't know the timing of this meeting, it's actually, our school's out on spring break, so there's a lot of families that are on vacation. I would be curious, I, I know you don't have your engineer team here, so some of the specifics, but like Lee had mentioned, how, how do I communicate to the other individuals in the subdivision on the different options? What are those options? I, I heard a couple different numbers, I don't know if that's fact, or if that's just, you know, spitballing here, um, but I would like to see some sort of plan moving forward, like Lee said, with timelines, so we could actually receive input from the citizens and make some informed decisions. And, and this is like the third or fourth time that I, I don't think, me as a board member, and I know a lot of the citizens are asking the same questions, I don't think they're getting their questions answered. And, and it's fine to take their numbers, you know, the thirty or thirty-five people here, but what about the other, you know, two hundred and fifty or three hundred people that live there? I mean, do they even know the options? And I don't think at this point they do.
Well, I guess our understanding of, um, this area here is it's built, so, and restored. So, I guess our, what we are, the areas in question are the ones that are under construction, and those are limited to, um, the works here. Am I, is that not your understanding?
I think, I think that's correct. Um, is it possible everybody in that area can get a direct mailing?
Yeah.
Explain them what their options are. I think that's...
And, but what are their options?
Right. And it's almost a house-by-house...
Well, I mean, the options, it sounds like you're giving is, you either take it or you leave it, am I right? Is that the options that you're giving?
Well, but, also, at the beginning of Forest and Drive, if, if, like, the first house that's in red doesn't want it, does that affect all the rest down the line?
That's my understanding, but I'll be clear...
That's my understanding, but I'll give clarification. It's my understanding that they can't continue the fiber route once this place is, but I'll give clarification.
So why do you need to even put a handful there then?
Because there's pipe, there's pipe, there's fiber there, it has to go somewhere, we have to coil it up somewhere, we just can't bury it, leave it, lots of second handle in the hole, you know, up there.
But there would just be the one handful then? Like it wouldn't continue down the line, or would it, where are all the pedestals?
No, we would take out every pedestal, then want to take it out.
So then, so there'd just be the one handful initially, and none after that?
I think every pedestal, you're saying you have a handle?
I just want to...
Yes, you took it out, yeah, every pedestal.
Every pedestal, yes, every pedestal would be replaced.
Would be replaced with a flush handle.
Without trying to be overly simplistic, is there a way for there to be a list of all the addresses on this overview, on this diagram? And then you go through, and then people can see, this person wants TDS, this person doesn't want TDS, this person, you know, I mean, it's very, yeah, it's very difficult for me, as a non-engineer, and I'm sure for the audience as well, to, you know, get a sent, we hear from different people, but I think that a spreadsheet of some kind, so that you really know what we're talking about here, would be helpful. I mean, you know, you, if you say no, what does that mean for here and here?
Can I ask a question to that? So, because I got a handle and I got a pen in my hand, so you're telling me that that handle works as splice point to service on record and continue the line down Foreston. You're telling me that if Dave and I say we don't want it, we screw over the entire neighborhood, you're like, "I'm going to put a vault, I can't splice and keep the line going." You just did that at the corner of my, other corner of my property. So why, I guess, I guess that's the part I don't understand. You're telling me either be the jerk or put up with a pet, but clearly you use those, I didn't go measure that handle.
Yeah, it's, because it's got spliced in it.
Yeah.
You're not going to have.
I guess I don't understand why you can't splice that thing in there, because it's just, it's just the, it's just the one, it's not even going to be a bunch like it was for that one.
Getting back to what Lee said, I think that makes the most of our sense.
Well, and I said, if you're taking feedback, can you take that to the engineer block? I guess, can we, does that have options? If Dave and I say, "No, we don't want it," take that pet out and you put a handle, why can't that be just a small splice point, so that we're not, we're not closing everybody else down the line? Because I think, I think there's at least one person in our neighborhood that wants it maybe too. I don't think it's many, maybe it's not efficient, but maybe that's why, when you said we'll just coil it, I get it, but again, I don't know that, because like Lee said, I don't know who's that gay or day on that, but I know everybody in that neighborhood.
I think the point is with, even with the handle, it can't be a splice point, because it'll fill with water and freeze in the winter, so...
They told us that that's why they can use a handle for that splice point at the corner, because it doesn't matter if it fills up with water. That's from, see, you're got, you said that the slices, the nodes that go from the fiber to the hole, that fill up with water, that they can't service, but they said that it doesn't matter on this point. So that's what I was told, that is my understanding. So I guess, if I say I want it, or I want it, I would, I don't know.
So, sounds like we need some more information.
I guess, I guess what, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I feel like we need to see a specific fix-it plan.
Yeah.
Before we can move forward with any sort of permits. I feel sorry for the folks that the yards are tore up and they're dealing with these issues, but I'm afraid that the way this is going, we're going to multiply the issue that we might have here.
And if there's a spreadsheet that's available for the board and the citizens to look at, and, you know, you can see, I mean, I'm...
What do you want on the spreadsheet?
Whether they can have it or not have it.
Okay.
You know, if the pedestals get taken out.
Okay.
And, and I think that would help all of us kind of conceptualize, because...
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult, but the thing is, it depends, like, who wants what.
That's why he's asking for a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Don't listen here and say, "I don't know," you're not just here, but yet you know you can't do handholds, like all of a sudden you know, you don't know. He's asking for information from you, please provide us with a board to make a decision.
With all due respect, if I put a spreadsheet together and I say, "This person can have it and this person can't, and this person can have it and this person can't," it's not engineered.
That's what he's asking for.
If there's somebody who doesn't want it though, and somebody who does, I don't know that.
Asking for who wants it, who doesn't, it's your, we're trying to make a decision here, or the board is, and we're forcing our frustration. I, like I said, I kind of know, but I think it's maybe one or two people that I would be posing an attack, but I can't tell off of that drawing, the way that you have it. So if you put 303 Foreston Drive, no, he doesn't want it, he doesn't want the pet. How many people in the neighborhood feel the same way? I got a rough idea, but I don't, I haven't talked to everybody. That's what they're asking for.
And we know it starts at the end, right? It's very simple, it comes from the end. Think of this house as, I live here, you say yes...
That's me, and there will not be a pedestal in my property.
If you say yes, what does it mean?
Right.
If you say no, what does it mean? The next one. Assuming he says yes, he's already given us there his answer, yes or no. Okay, we know what that means. If he says yes, it goes to the next guy, yes or no? What does that mean?
That's true.
Then it goes to the next guy, yes or no? It's pretty simple, the first no, does that mean everybody else gets cut off? Start at the beginning, yes, no? It's a full path.
And I understand that it's hard to nail down, but by the same token, it's a starting point. I don't really know how the board, or you can really make any final decisions without having a sense here, and we'll take you at your word, that you want to make things right, and we all agree it's a bad situation, so to make it better, let's, you know, let's identify the houses and find out, you've got phone numbers and addresses, and you can make those contacts and say, "Okay, here's the catalog of information that we have."
But that information have to come from your engineers then? That what if this person doesn't want it?
Yeah. Again, I've asked for that from our own engineers. Can you tell me exactly what you're asking? And they said, "No, not without sitting down with everybody," because, I mean, it's not just, it's not just a yes, no down the line.
And that's kind of what I'm saying. That's kind of what I'm saying, is that, you know, if you get those, if you ask those questions to these, and the people who are here, and as John said, the people who maybe aren't, but, you know, would give you input, then you'd be able to sit down with the engineers and say, "Well, here's, here's what we know." These are the people who say yes.
Why, why can't, why can't the engineers tell you?
Because there's multiple ways to engineer it, depending on who wants the service.
Okay, so if we find out who wants it, that will help, and then the engineers could tell us what they can do.
Right.
If you're unwilling to move anything, how are there multiple ways to do it? It's either in or out, with a handle or a pet, that's what you're saying the options are. So I guess, if you can't, if you're telling me that you can't splice in where the pet was, you can't splice it to continue the line, and then just the houses where the pedestal was is an impact, if you're telling me that the minute one person on that line says no, we just closed everybody out.
Like I just said, it depends. So I know you want an answer from me, I can't give it to you tonight without knowing who wants it and what the engineering options are. So, you know, I think that's what we said at the beginning of the meeting, was it would be helpful if we could communicate with everyone on this map and get a yes, no, and then we can go to the drawing board and optimize.
You should work for construction, okay? We dug up fiber optic, you can repair it, they do repair it, and we bury it, so don't tell me you can splice it to it. Don't tell me you do it.
I don't think I did tell you that.
Is it possible to have information to us for this coming month? I mean, this was a special meeting tonight, and on Monday night we have a meeting. Can, how much of this could get done in your estimation? I mean, if this is a top priority for TDS, then can people be contacted? Can we?
I mean, we're happy to have a meeting, our only, the downside of that was not everyone being available on the same night, so we might need two options, and, you know, I would hate to leave somebody out if they can't make a set meeting, you know.
So two meeting dates?
Or phone calls, or what have you. I mean, I guess...
For somebody who works in marketing, you're not really thinking out of their box. You have everybody here, you can do a survey monkey, you can do, oh, you buy, purchase list of everybody in that address, you can do a self, so, address stamps, both with a questionnaire in it, there's a quick, do you want service or not? There's many other things that you can do, yes, it'll take a little bit more time than others, but there are things that you can have, and I know that you guys have your exhale representatives that go from house to house. Spring break, there's probably people on vacation, but there are probably people home that you can go house to house, play the situation, because I can pretty much guarantee that everybody in our neighborhood knows what's going on, you can get an answer from them right away.
And then can we have an engineer at one of these meetings?
Sure.
I think that would be helpful, because it'd probably solve a lot of this rather quickly.
Have the right people that can answer the questions, everybody else.
Could I ask a very quick and simple question?
Okay.
Is this the last of Cottage Grove that's being addressed, or are we going to run this problem smack into it again?
I think you said you got about 40% of the village built at this point.
So, is this not an opportunity to do things a whole lot better?
Right, that's why I think they're going to have this meeting and use a direct mail route, I think, for survey monkey, whatever.
And better communication in the future for people that are coming down the bike.
Who called the special meeting tonight?
We did, I mean, between Matt and myself, we wanted to bring this out, and, I mean, we're making progress, but...
I guess I'm disappointed that they were here three weeks ago and said they were going to be the last meeting, and you weren't here. So we have people that are missing in this meeting, because they have plans.
I mean, you have to get everybody at a meeting, sir?
I just have one question, I have a siphon mediation, there's a lot of, like in my yard, I have three holes or spots that they dug up that are outside of where the pedestal is, and I know there's similar situations elsewhere in the neighborhoods. Is there a way that you could release them to do the remediation on those areas ahead of time before the other one is done, so you don't have the dirt and the mud?
I think I mentioned that earlier, I don't have a problem with letting them fix landscaping, but no construction, is that...
Well, okay.
I mean, how are they going to be a bunch?
You know, the devil is always in the details. And so if we say, "Okay, go ahead and do some fixing," and then suddenly people go, "Whoa, wait, they're not just doing fixing, they're laying cable," or there's this or that, and so there has to be some coordination between TDS and the village to say, "Okay, we're going out to House A, House B, and House C for remediation only." And, you know, I, it's, if we can work something out like that, we would. I'm trying to be difficult, it's just that it's always, you know, someone says to the lawyer, "Well, how come you didn't think about that?" Well, we're trying to.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because realistically, you're probably a month before we're going to have a resolution.
Presumably, some areas, it might be more than just remediation, it's going to be removal of equipment.
So if that's, if, you know, we should know from our survey which houses are just remediation, or which involve more construction?
Do you have a fair idea of what we're asking for?
Yeah, I got a question, or, I want to ask your, hey, how many homes is this involving at all?
Well, if all the homes on this map, and then the ones extending down Heather Court, or Heather, Heather Drive, is about 140-ish.
140 homes?
Yep.
Okay, and it's putting all the way down?
All the way down, yep.
And, okay, I just found a 35 deep water, and I know neighbors of mine that haven't done here, and could not do it, so, thanks.
But if you have a fair idea of what we're asking, I mean, for the next village board meeting, we have an engineer here, and we have a meeting, that everybody at least contact them, what the options are, and move forward from that point?
Our next meeting is next Monday, and I think it would be helpful to get as much of that information to us as possible by then.
Is that reasonable? Is that reasonable?
By next Monday?
I mean, you're just asking for the data and as much information as we can give you on the options by address.
Right.
Right, and that's what we're looking for, is that reasonable by next Monday, you think? There's some sort of question here.
We will continue, I mean, we will give you everything that we can gather by next Monday, and we don't, we don't hear back, or we, you know, send our mailer, or however we're going to contact people.
Well, my sense is that if anybody sitting here gets called, they'll call you back, I think. So, I mean, it's on all of us to try to work together to get this information and...
Well, I guess from your perspective, what is the, you know, what percentage of people do we need to contact to make a decision? If we can't get a call back, or if they're on vacation, or what have you, is that 100%? Is it 70%?
I think with the direct mail route, if you send a direct mail to each address and have the neighborhood meeting, that's probably fair enough.
Yeah, but they're...
That won't be by next.
Right, but that won't happen by next.
So, at this point, my main concern is Foreston, because that's where a lot of the dug-up holes are, and that's where a lot of the residents are currently. So can you at least focus on that for next Monday?
Yeah.
Because that's less houses, and I don't know if the Heather Drive, if that area, is that all dug up too now?
Oh, yeah.
They continue on, and they do have dug-ups on the front side of Heather.
Both sides, yeah.
Sorry, it just isn't on this map, so I didn't realize.
Yeah, if you can show the rest of Heather Drive.
Yeah. Are there, you just haven't been contacted by anybody on that street saying that they don't want?
So it's not that there are complaints there, it's just like you said, it's the main people we've contacted. We have talked to quite a few people on our buried Foreston, but yes, like on Yarrow Hill and Heather Drive, we have not talked to either people here from there, or we haven't received a lot of complaints from them. I know Matt mentioned he spoke to someone on the phone from Yarrow Drive, so I'm sure there are complaints out there, it's just that we don't have any way of representing them to you tonight.
Okay.
There's people from Heather Granger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not all.
I'm sorry, the last meeting where we wrote everybody's contact.
And we've got trucks that are on Dentaria that are not happy, I mean, a person's house was right here, and they walked their driveway for like 24 hours trying to put in, and their pedestal's right there, and their front yard is dug up.
Hey, JJ, can we get a copy of the map that people are talking about, that where all the easements are and stuff?
Well, that's different than this one. Well, that, I mean, it's just, it's a, you can get the original plat.
That's what we're looking for, yeah.
We can, yep, some of them are around here, we've got to go down to Dane County, but we can...
That would be appreciated.
So that'll be the original plat to show that there are easements that are not on this board.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for.
But we do get into, just for everybody, and again, I'm not an expert in any of this, but there's, an easement is not an easement is not an easement. There's PUEs, or public utility easements, there's stormwater easements, sanitary sewer, I mean, there...
So we're only looking for the P.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so that type of easement.
JJ, avoiding engineering code, what's a PUE?
A PUE, a public utility easement.
Okay, any other?
I've just...
There was one other one I heard tonight that I was wondering about.
I just have one question. From my understanding of what he was saying is, I live on Yarrow Hill Drive, they had an easement to go in the backyard, but they chose to do it in the front yard for cost savings, is that correct?
In several spots, yes.
Yeah, we are not happy on Yarrow Hill. See, that's what they did, so they continued out of drive, and so they did have an easement, so it's right there, or, you know...
What's your address?
224 Yarrow.
So it depends on what side of Yarrow you live on, if you live on a side, I'm sorry.
They did it right down the middle. They did it down the middle.
This side has one, this side does not, according to this map, like I know there's been some speculation on whether...
That's why, they just went down the middle, and just did a loop here, loop here, and loop there.
We have to ask back.
For sure, this is, this is really wide, and there's a stormwater, yeah, this is a long distance, and it goes way down, so I don't know if you can...
You haven't already done, so make sure these folks have your name and address, or if we're doing anything with restoration in the meantime.
They just have to run two lines. It's easier to run two lines. Excuse me, excuse me.
People.
Can we not only have an engineer? Can we not only have an engineer? So in addition to an engineer, you were saying earlier that at an executive level, it was decided not to move him to the backyard for the costs, right?
That's right.
Can we have one of those representatives here?
Sure, yeah, I'm an executive, and that was the decision that we made.
But you went in the greenway on the backside of us, the first thing you did is went down the greenway on the backside of Yarrow Hill Drive. And then we come home and there's holes in front of our driveways. So you went down the greenway.
You went down the greenway once.
Once, and then, I don't know if it's too much snow or what, I would have blown up the snow for you.